...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody sign in please.
Tom, just push yes and confirm. I guess, ain't you working?
Ain't working, I'm working.
There it is, yeah.
There we go. None don't re-present up there.
Show us the roll please.
President, Baines, President, Burge, President, Cregman, President, Goins, President, Heatherland, President, Wagner, President, Wilson, President.
Thank you. First item is recognition of guest. First person is Rebecca Mungar. Would Rebecca please come up? Johnny, you may want to come up here with her. Where's Johnny Bruce? Where'd he go?
He was. I don't know, I had her put on this. I was, I've been fighting for and standing up for her. I know exactly what's going on and we're going to help this lady.
Alright.
Go ahead Rebecca, go ahead with your shoes.
I brought you guys a folder, can I?
Just pass them around.
What's in the folder, as he hands it out, and I've already spoken with several of the board members, is the first set of pictures, I put some pictures in there just to kind of give you all some visuals of what we're trying to do and what we've got coming and what we are doing. The first set, when you first open it up, is what our current facilities look like and what we've got at the softball field and again, like what it looks like right now. The second set of pictures are from Anderson University and what that is, is we were actually given a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to purchase materials from Anderson University that if we were buying them new, would cost us anywhere between $30,000, $45,000 to actually buy the materials that we got from them. We were able to buy that for $3,600. And that includes a complete outfield, six-foot outfield fence, a scoreboard, a backstop netting, a cage netting with the top of the cage, the top rails for the fence, the protective piping that goes across the fence, the windscreen for the fence. Again, pretty much everything that wasn't concreted into the ground at Anderson, we got. Right now, I'm working with us on the scoreboard and the fence and those things put in place. What we would like to do and what we, honestly, for the future, we would like to build a hitting facility. Something like baseball has, and I put a picture in there of what baseball has, facility. We would be able to hit it. Again, a place for my girls, locker room that they can change. What we have currently is, it's a bathroom, is what it is, and it has all of our equipment stored in that and you can see that on those first pages. And it's a big amount. I know that that would not be something that we could probably do all at one time. We could look at for maybe even doing in phases, possibly like the hitting part first and then add the locker room on later or something along those lines.
Mike, what I, what I have, I've been talking to her quite a bit and what I propose, I don't know whether we have to make a motion or not, but I think we've talked a little bit about, I think we ought to give her about $20,000 to start off with. She got some people that's donating some work, she got some people that's actually going to lay the brick and the block for, we just got to pay for that part of it and I think she's got some estimates on that. I think every what we do, we need to put somebody maybe to work with her and we come back to the board and tell them what she's doing and everything. I don't know whether we have to make a motion on it or not, but...
Well, you know, we have talked about it and we've got a meeting coming up on the 29th, is that right Jeff? To close out the budget. Maybe we can do it, talk about it that night. We'll know exactly where we're going to be at the end of our budget.
What I want her to understand is that we are trying to help her and we are going to help her some way or another. She put in a lot of her own time without being paid to take care of these girls at our Campbell County facility and I feel, now, if we give a school a sport, this is Danny talking, if we give a school a sport, we should stand behind them and support them any way we can and it's a, we've had a girl softball program for a long time. If you go in that locker room up there, you wouldn't let your girl go in there and try and close. And I wouldn't either, you know, I'd be up there, I'd be up there trying to do something about it in my opinion, you know. Anyway, I just wanted to know, we are going to help her and do something to help her and get her on the right track.
The $20,000 number, what will that do, you know?
May I have a seat? I've worked on this. I have worked with Richard quite a bit of finance on approximately $18,000 if the board approves. That will get the scoreboard up, that's probably a $15,000 scoreboard. We need it up, we'll have to get LaFollette Utilities to set to two poles and set to power. Then, to place the fencing, to get the fencing up, there's a quote of about $6,000, $7,000 to put all the fencing up and the railing. And then, Ms. Mungar has free labor to build the backstop and to get the batting cages up. So we can do all of that in the vicinity of about $18,000 and pay all for $3,600. And it's, I've been up there to see the equipment, the scoreboard and so on. It is some really nice...
Yeah, it's a wireless scoreboard, I believe, Rebecca, yeah. And, yeah, I just think we have to help her and I appreciate you looking into that, Mr. Niderford, and thank you.
Mr. Niderford, is that, is that in this year's budget?
Yes, we could take that out of this year's budget.
It's my understanding you've talked to Richard and worked it out?
Yes.
Do you need a motion to approve that?
I would, yes.
The $18,000, I make the motion?
I second it.
Well, now wait a minute, it's not an item on the agenda. So if you want to, before we get to the agenda, if you want to suspend the roll, add it, we'll add it. Yeah.
And regardless, whatever you do here in verbal form, you'll have to have some kind of assuming that, you have to, Larry, do you know whether you have to appropriate additional money or not? That's the only question I have. If it's already in your existing...
It's in the capital letter.
...then you're good to go.
Yes, I've worked with Richard.
I was under the understanding he could do it without more approvals. Is that, then, you won't need a motion? That's what I told you earlier.
Okay, so does everybody understand what we're going to do? We're going to give Mr. Niderford, he has the authority to go ahead and take care of this situation. Everybody understands? Any questions? Anybody got any questions for Ms. Mungar? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'd be looking forward to seeing that nice shift.
You're welcome, anytime.
Yeah, good job, thank you.
Rebecca, just keep us informed of how it's going and everything, let me come next meeting or something, let us know what's going on, how things are going. Thank you.
Thank you. Recognize Chris Mays. Mr. Mays?
First, excuse me, first of all, I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to speak on behalf of driver education, returning to the Campbell County school system. And I have a handout for each person. Please.
When did you say that budget?
While these are going around, first of all, I would like to try to emphasize how important it is for high school students to have driver education. Driver education is a class that's not to be taken lightly. It's something I'm very passionate about teaching. I have been teaching driver's ed for 15 years privately, about six or seven as an actual teacher in school. And driving, as we all know, is something that we use every day. We use it every day from the time we're 15, 16-years-old, pretty much for the rest of our lives until our future kids take our keys from us. And I want to try to emphasize the importance of this and, you know, starting off, two-thirds of all wrecks that happen in the state of Tennessee are involved with a teenager in some way. And that is a very alarming figure in my opinion. And I was one of the last teachers of driver education at Campbell County High School along with Mr. Chadwell. And when the program was cut, we were both floored actually. And ever since then, I've been trying everything I could to get it put back in place. And when I left and took a driver education position at Lenore City and had the opportunity to come back, I jumped at the chance because ever since I left the first time, I have been teaching students from Campbell County in private lessons at a charge of almost $200 per student. And if their parents are willing to pay a figure of that amount, I'm trying to figure out why we don't have it in our schools. But I think this would be a tremendous help for our children and getting them on the right track to hit the road safely. If you look down here at your handout, I've been speaking with a man named Mark Bloodworth at the Tennessee Department of Education. And he has informed me that money available for driver education is upwards of $70 to $80 per student. So if we have a class with 35 students per class, three classes per semester, that comes out to around $7,500 per semester. Now, if I'm teaching the class as a singular teacher, that would put us probably at 20 students per class, per semester, which I was the sole driver's ed teacher at Lenore City High School and we were able to have 20 students per class. And so that's kind of the money breakdown from the state. All of the money that is collected from fines by Tennessee Highway Patrol, some of that money goes to driver education programs across the whole state. And that's how they figure out how to divide that money up. You know, the students are required six hours in the car and they will get that in their driving groups over a course of two weeks. That's how that would work out. In the meantime, the students that are not driving, if I'm the singular teacher, they would be assigned to a particular teacher as a peer tutor, okay? If we have two teachers, one teacher would be a classroom teacher, one teacher would be the driving instructor, which is the way we did it the last time I was here. And that worked out really well. As far as, you know, if we could ask for donations for the class, I don't know how we would work charging fees for students, but I know at Lenore City, we charged a driver's ed fee of $25 per student. Knox County, in their driver education program, I believe, it's somewhere in your handout, a fee of $125 each student. And I have been speaking with Steve Hiddle about their driver education program. He's the director of driver education in Knox County. They charge the $125 fee. I asked him about the insurance for the cars. They put it under the blanket policy that they do all of their maintenance vehicles and any kind of vehicle for the school system, they put that under the, a general blanket Beatty Chevrolet has a rental program for driver's ed cars. They rent to most of the schools in the area, including Knox County. Their charge is, if you look down here, it's $12 per day for the school year. Plus, we have to pay an additional fee for the installation of the teacher break. And I believe by the end of the year, that comes to around $3,500 that we would have to pay for the car if we chose to go through a rental program with Beatty Chevrolet. I have also spoke with Mr. Bells at Bells GMC and he said he would be willing to sell us a car at his cost, no extra charges. And that was the last time I spoke with him, was sometime around January. So there's another option if we want to buy, you know, trying to keep it in the local area. But going back to the Beatty Chevrolet rental program, they require that we keep the car under 7,000 miles per year, which I don't think would be a huge concern considering, I don't think we have that many days to drive that much. The last time I taught driver ed here, we got gas for the car from the county garage and that was the way we did it at Lenore City as well. We had a keypad code and the keys that you put in the little box there to turn to access the gas pumps. So we didn't have to have any kind of purchasing card or any kind of special credit from a gas station to purchase gas for the car. And usually, put gas in the car once a week, so I don't think the gas would be too expensive. I'm trying to cover everything I could possibly cover in a short amount of time. I just think that this is something we need to consider and something I've worked very hard to try to get back in our school system. You know, I've been talking to Mr. Niderford and previously Mr. Poston all year and Ms. Heatherly and Mr. Burge and just trying to sell the program. I believe it would be very worthwhile, it's something our kids could use and very, very helpful in their future lives. Just try to give them a knowledge of the road before they have to tackle it on their own. And I would much, I would feel much safer with my own children being taught before they tackle this responsibility by themselves. So, do you all have any questions?
I have a question. Would this be one cars, I mean, one car or two cars? One for each high school or one for both schools?
That would be one car and that brings me to a point I forgot to mention. If, and I spoke with Mr. Niderford about this previously, if hiring a teacher would be a problem for both high schools, I would happily volunteer to teach the class at both high schools. I could teach three days a week at Campbell County High School or two days a week at Jellico or however. We needed to work that out so we could have it at both schools. That would not be a problem for me.
To follow up on Ms. Heatherly's question, if you did that, then would it just be one car that was required, but if you had to split teachers up?
Yes, sir.
You would have to have two cars?
For that, it would be one car, yes, sir.
Seems to me that if we do this program, it'd be cheaper to buy a car versus renting if you think it can stay under the 7,000 miles a year. Is that what you experienced in the past?
Yes, sir. Every car that I've previously been a part of with the school system has been bought from a local dealership.
How does it count towards the credits for the children?
A driver's ed class is one credit an hour, just like any other elective class.
Yes, sir. And that would, that would help the burden of elective classes at the high schools. I've spoke with a couple of guidance counselors, Ms. Ayers, Ms. Pierce, Ms. Perkins, and they're talking about the problem of placing students in electives and this would also help out the burden of electives.
Mr. Clint?
One other question. How do you determine what students take the class? I mean, when he said 20 per class, we've got a lot of students, I'm just curious on that.
We have talked to...
Everybody's not going to get to take the class, it seems like.
We have talked to Mr. Mays and Jamie Wheeler. Usually, it is a sophomore class and every parent doesn't necessarily want their child to take driver's education at that time. But it does become a problem because Campbell County High School has approximately 300 sophomores and Jellico High School has approximately 100 sophomores. So you cannot service all students with two driver's ed classes, but you can service several. I don't have those numbers here, but you can kind of think. So Coach Mays, you're telling me that you could take approximately 75 to 85 students and if we had two teachers that other, teacher could take 75 to 80?
Yes, sir.
Per semester?
Yes, sir.
And that's split between the two schools?
Well, that's what we've been talking about because we know that by funding, we're going to have to look at what teachers that we could roll into this program and how we could fund that. But we've been working on the whole scenario, going to each high school, the two teachers. Mr. Heatherly's been back there talking to insurance companies and I've been talking to the two big car dealerships trying to get a deal going there. So it might would be a good idea to set us up a group, two or three from the board, Mr. Heatherly and I, Chris Mays, and just see exactly what those numbers will be over the next two or three weeks.
Well, let's do this, let's take it.
I still got a question or two here. Mr. Mays, this $125 that you charge the students, is that on top of the money that comes from the state?
Yes, sir, that's what Knox County does.
What do you do if you've got a student that can't pay that $125?
Well, that's what I was saying, if we can't charge a fee, we can ask, I know it's, it sounds kind of hokey a little bit, but we could ask for donations for the class. We had several students when I was at Lenore City that were on fee waiver, that were not required to pay the $25 that we charged there. But we never had a problem obtaining money for the class.
Well, when you got donations, where do you get donations from?
Just private individuals, yes, sir.
Individuals?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Let's take a straw poll and the board members that would like to see Mr. Niderford and Mr. Heatherly and then Mr. Mays pursue it, let's give them some direction. And so, all those in favor pursuing, just raise your hand. Alright, go to it.
One other question on the maintenance, would that come through our, our school maintenance on the cars?
No, ma'am. If we buy the car from a dealership, we take it in for the scheduled maintenance with their mechanics. If we rent the car from Beatty, they take care of the maintenance...
First two years?
Sir?
First two years, they take care of the maintenance, first two years?
Yes, I believe so. And the thing about the rental program, if, once we finish the school year, they take the car back and they resell it at the end of the year, is what they do.
Give it a new car every year?
Yes, sir, with the rental program.
I still don't am in favor of trying to keep it local, in my opinion. Mr. Bells has done a lot of good things for this county and for the schools and stuff. He's a really good man, Mr. Bells is.
I agree.
He doesn't make any difference.
Oh, we got to bid it in, okay. Alright, then.
Alright, we good?
We're good.
Any questions for Mr. Mays?
He's just a man.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mays.
Thank you.
Good job, thanks.
Thank you.
Next item, approval of consent agenda. What's the pleasure?
Make a motion, we approve.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second the motion.
Any discussion? Cast your vote, please. Wallace? Anyone wish to change their vote? Show us the vote.
Baines, yes. Baines, yes. Burge, yes. Cregman, yes. Goins, yes. Heatherland, yes. Wagner, yes. Wilson, yes. Question passed.
Thank you. Next item, approval of regular agenda. What's the pleasure?
So, move.
Got a motion?
Take it.
Do I have a second?
Take it.
Any discussion? Cast your vote, please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show us the vote.
Baines, yes. Baines, yes. Burge, yes. Cregman, yes. Goins, yes. Heatherland, yes. Wagner, yes. Wilson, yes. Question passed.
Thank you. Next item, comments from the chair. The only thing I have is a couple announcements to remind everyone about the retreat on Friday at 3 to 5.
3 to 8.
3 to 8, I'm sorry.
Yes.
That's this Friday. Then Mr. Niderford slipped me a note and the finance department wants us to meet on the 23rd or 25th to get a budget book. Is that correct, Jeff?
Correct.
So which days do you all want to meet? Do we have to meet?
What's the dates?
23rd or 20, 23rd to the 25th?
Is that on a Monday or Thursday?
Tuesday.
It's Tuesday through...
Thursdays, I can't be here on Thursday. I have physical therapy on Thursdays.
Well...
I have to drive all the way to Knoxville. Well, no, not at night, I don't, no.
It's at 6 o'clock?
Oh, that's cool. I can do that, I'm good at night.
I can for 23rd.
Okay. What about the 25th? Mr. Crystal's going to be out of town.
Y'all will. I'm not going.
Jeff, it's not a call meeting, it's just for, to hand out the books, basically?
Well, Mike, if you want a meeting briefing and discussion, I would say it's a public meeting, in my opinion. I don't know how y'all prefer your...
Well, I don't know how much we can really, once we get the book, I mean, we would need a little time to look at it, probably.
Do you want to be brief? If the book's handed out, nobody probably, since the office passes out the books, and since you're...
I'd rather be brief, guys. I mean, there's a whole lot in there that, that I would like, you know, to be brief. And that's my opinion, it may be different from somebody else.
The 25th at 6 o'clock, is that okay?
June the 25th?
6 o'clock.
June the 25th?
That's right.
6 o'clock. Where at, right here?
Right here.
I'll think about it.
Huh?
I'll think about it.
Okay, you're at the beach. Alright, so everybody clear on that? June the 25th at 6 o'clock here at the courthouse. Budget briefing. Then, tonight, we're not going to adjourn our meeting, we're going to recess and on the 29th at 6 o'clock, we're going to do our year-end budget closeouts. Is that right, Mr. Marlowe?
That's correct.
Is that good with everybody? That's the last day we can do it?
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock. Ms. Gale will send out...
Good job, man, I ain't even going to, yeah, I'll be here.
Okay.
I'm going to New York on the 26th.
Okay. Alright, we good?
I'll be back on the 28th.
Is that 6 o'clock?
Yeah.
Alright, that's all I have. Next item, first, let me say this, I want to welcome Mr. Niderford, this is his first meeting with us and I'm glad he's willing to serve. I think he may introduce some of his new staff members back there tonight, but Director's monthly report.
I'd like to introduce Mr. Robbie Heatherly as CTE Secondary Supervisor, Director, anything else that I might find. Most people know Mr. Heatherly. A few things to bring up today. Our math-science partnership grant, we have approximately 60, 65 teachers. When school was out on Thursday, they came back on Friday and did the math-science partnership training. Then they came back on Saturday. They have 16 training sessions and we hope to roll those folks as teacher leaders into our school this fall to help with their learning communities, with their data analysis. And the University of Tennessee comes out and actually helps them plan lessons that's related to the Ten Ready Test that's going to be rolled out in a few days. We paid out approximately incentive pay or the pay that we, the board decided last year on days missed. We had 64 teachers who did not miss one day and, Mr. Marlowe, you correct me, that was $50 per day. We had 17 that only missed one day and 23 that missed only two days. So 104 teachers missed two days or less.
Wow, that's pretty good.
We think that will improve next year because when you start bragging about your incentive, it makes a difference. We're working on the first round of renovation at Campbell County High School on the two science labs. We're going to do the two small labs, according to Mr. Poston, I've been working with him and Richard, out of this year's budget. And then we will work, when we get our money, July 1st, on working on the two big science labs. I think that's Ms. Baines and Ms. Chadwell's back there. And the LMS-CHS floor, we have that ready to get repaired. And we've been working on several farm marshal issues. We're trying to correct all the pokers before school starts. That is program of corrective action that the farm marshal has laid out there for us. Most of them are not big money right now, thank goodness, they're just time-consuming. And that's all I have for that.
Alright. Any question for Mr. Niderford?
Mr. Niderford, the roof and the floor at Elk Valley, you know, where the water's getting under the...
under the floor, are we doing anything to that roof or that floor there?
Ms. Nancy Lay just asked me the question. Tennessee Risk Management was supposed to send us an architectural report.
Okay.
And I'm not sure, she's not got one, and he was supposed to send her and me one. As soon as this session's over, I'm gonna go back and look in my email and see if I have that.
Okay. All right. Do you think it'll be an insurance job?
No.
No.
I think that they feel that that has been an issue over a period of many years.
Okay.
And we...he talked to us a little bit about that blasting and mining in those areas through the years. You could have structural changes in the surface of the earth that could have caused that. But we're gonna read that report, Ms. Lay and I, and see where they're going with it.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Marlowe. Next item to recognize, Mr. Marlowe, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General financial reports. Fair purpose school fund, 10,326,000 dollars cash. Couple of tables. Revenues...
I'm not sure what you said.
Realization. We're spending here at 72 and a half for wealth. Getting more some good. And as you notice, the last time you see the cash balance, every money will... 1.2 federal property school fund, 517,000, 85 in the bank. Revenues 69.3, spending 69.3, in balance. And the last one, city cap period fund, add to custody, 491,000, 861. Revenue 86.1. Finisher 78.1, 812,750. And that's all relative to the new eligibility for being your agency. You got to do your research. If you had my thought on it, I'd give a motion for acceptance.
What's the pleasure?
I make a motion, we accept it.
Got a motion? Got a second? Now, any questions for Mr. Marlowe? All right. Cast your vote, please. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote.
Cory, yes. Bane, yes. Burge, yes. Crickmore, yes. Goins, yes. Heatherly, yes. Roder, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Next item, the chairman's budget amendment. Budget amendment for a month, a few years, for a meeting. We'd like to give you that in detail, so we won't...
What's the pleasure? You want to take them all at once? All of them?
I think it would be good to do all.
Got a motion to approve all of them at once. Do I have a second?
Second the motion.
All right. Who would cast your vote, please, to approve all the budget amendments? Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote.
Cory, yes. Bane, yes. Burge, yes. Crickmore, yes. Goins, yes. Heatherly, yes. Roder, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Next business, the chairman's copy paper, which was solicited for on April 23rd. We received open on May 5th. Received bids from four bidders, office depot, $27.22. American paper required, $24.90. And X, E, D, X, how do you say that? $29.13. And state was $24.97. Recommendation is American paper required, lowest price, $24.90. Also, recommendation, this is all from the chair.
What's the pleasure?
I make a motion, we approve.
Got a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll take it.
Second? Any discussion? Cast your vote. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote.
Cory, yes. Bane, yes. Burge, yes. Crickmore, yes. Goins, yes. Heatherly, yes. Roder, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Next good item, chairman's so good, we've got coming 15, 16 school year. Solicited for on 23rd of May, so we're coming second to. Received bids from three bidders. Ellison Sanders applied, $21,796.25. Norvex applied, $30,321.15. And ABM Enterprises, $56,554.70. Recommendation is Ellison's applied, most of best bid. Also, recommendation, I'd regret.
What's the pleasure?
I make a motion, we approve the Ellison's.
Have a motion? Do I have a second? Any discussion? Cast your vote, please. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote.
Cory, yes. Bane, yes. Burge, yes. Crickmore, yes. Goins, yes. Heatherly, yes. Roder, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Chairman, that's all I have, doesn't matter. We need to be...
All right. Ms. Bay?
Looks like we got a lot of money, anyway, right? Right, yeah, we do. Are there any questions regarding the...
How do we give that bar in somewhere?
You have to spend it or it stays there.
Okay, I'll do it.
Without going into detail, are we still dealing with the candy issue?
Yes.
Okay.
We have that for that in the conference.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions for Ms. Bay? Thank you. All right. Items for action. Approved life insurance policy for director of schools. I wanted some clarity on this. As long as I've been on the board, there's been an insurance policy, a life insurance policy issued to the director of schools. And I think that was more for their family than it was for the director of schools. And it was a perk, if you want to call it that. After we approved this contract, Jeff's office had received an invoice from E. Hill. Is that right, Jeff?
Correct.
For the premium, which is $1,600. Is that right? And so I called Mr. Bane to find out whether or not, if he could recall why we left it out of the contract. So we're gonna have that discussion tonight and give Mr. Marlowe direction as to whether or not we're gonna pay that invoice.
Is that an annual?
It is an annual premium. I think the policy's $100,000. Is that right, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay.
The reason we left it out, Mr. Work, is our attorney recommended it. And I think Larry couldn't recall it, but him and Mr. Walden both assured the night that we discussed that. Don't remember the reason, but Dale recommended that we take that out, if you all can recall. Is that not correct? Yes, that's correct.
Does anybody know the reason why?
I talked to Dale about that after the fact, and he pretty much said that he didn't recommend it, that most schools nowadays did not have that policy. And that's pretty much all he said. He didn't say, he said, "Do what you want to do." And that's the only reason he's... He's not it up. I do have one question. We got an invoice.
We haven't paid it, no.
Send us an invoice for...on our own?
It's a...it's an annual...
It was probably in Mr. Post's contrary.
And they just... They were sending it on. Okay.
So that's where that came in.
So it has not been paid?
It has not.
It has not been paid.
It's not in...it was not in contract, but Mr. Walden signed it, correct? Is it not?
He is covered under the life insurance, under the regular life insurance, like all the other...
Or the...
Okay.
All right. Can I get a motion to pay it? Or I can get a motion to leave alone for nothing? Have a motion from anybody?
Just for clarification, does he have a life insurance? Did you just say he has a life insurance through the county school system?
No. Mr. Burge said that he participates, is that right?
Everybody's covering on all the boys, I think. $25,000, I believe, isn't it? Yeah. Even the affected boy.
Yeah, that's...that's...that's true.
Oh, do we have one, too?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't know that.
Yeah. I'm your beneficiary, so...
All right, any comments?
You have options to do?
Ms. Crystal, I do.
So how do you feel about this?
Well, of course, your family would be better protected, but I will say I've got enough to take care of my family.
So you're okay if we spend the money somewhere else? And it ain't nothing personal, you know that?
Yes.
We love you, you know that?
I found out, Mr. Wilson, a long time ago. You need to kind of take care of yourself.
You take care of yourself?
Because you can't depend on somebody else.
I...
So I'm...I'm all right with it.
If you ask Sue Ellen, though, she'd have a different answer. Yeah. Was she here?
And when did you talk to Dale today?
No, a couple of weeks ago.
Okay. All right. If there's no other questions, we'll move on. All right. Next item. Consider amending the 15, 16 school year calendar. We're gonna amend it. For what reason? Ms. Lay back there? She's not...or is?
Wasn't it for an election?
Yeah, there was some...
Yes.
There was a...there was a conflict with one of the elections. That's right.
It was a different election than we normally have, I think, in the spring, is that correct?
March 1st, 2016, president primary preference election.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Okay. So what's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion, we accept the approved, I mean, the amended school calendar.
I got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll take it.
Any discussion? Cast your vote, please. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote.
Cory, yes. Bane, yes. Burge, yes. Crickmore, yes. Goins, yes. Heatherly, yes. Roder, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Thank you. Item C, consider approving differentiated pay plan for 15, 16 school years. Mr. Niderfer, do you recommend this?
Yes, Ms. Lay worked on this, and that's basically giving that $50 for sick leave. If you do not miss a day, you would receive that as a...
How much did you say that was total?
Oh, gosh. Mr. Marlowe, you correct me, but we paid out total teachers, 300, ending expenditures, $90,500.
I don't worry about that for real time.
Okay. Anyway, Ms. Lay got that prepared for me, and I'm sure that's correct.
$50.
$50 per day, right?
$50 per day.
Yes.
Sounds bad.
That's a pretty good deal.
All right. I have a...do I have a motion?
Yeah, please.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Cast your vote, please. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote.
Cory, yes. Bane, yes. Burge, yes. Crickmore, yes. Goins, yes. Heatherly, yes. Roder, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Thank you. Next item, discuss and take any necessary actions regarding the placement of labs at Campbell County High School. Larry, I put that on there because we've been talking about this for about four or five months now, and Tom and Ms. Chadville's back there. And what did you say that we were gonna do with the labs, tentatively?
We're gonna take care of the two smaller labs that have less...it will take a little less out of this year's money. And then when July 1st rolls around, their new money, we're gonna probably work that out of capital outlay and try to have most of that equipment. And by the way, Ms. Chadville, Ms. Baines, most of their equipment will have to be bid at. It will be quite a bit over the $10,000 threshold.
Well, I'd like to see the board come July, appropriate the money in our new budget to get it done at least as quickly as possible when they get back into school.
Yeah.
I went up there and looked at those labs, and I'm embarrassed as to what Ms. Chadville and Ms. Bane has to work under. I mean, it's really sad. We're making a good effort, and I know we're making a good effort, but it's been way too long.
What's the cost of the two small labs? You said we can get that done out of this year's money? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. And I'm saying maybe $18,000. Richard has been working with us, and we think we've got that squared away to do the requisitions because most of that furniture and so on will be under bid price.
Is that what we're...when we say replace lab? Furniture, the desks, tables, and all that equipment? What all goes along with that?
Yes. A couple of our labs are not that bad a shape, just some...fixed some water supplies, some furniture, a little lab equipment. But Ms. Chadville's needs a total makeover. I mean, electrical, wiring, safety hoods, mobile labs that they can roll around and so on. I mean, electrical, wiring, safety hoods, mobile labs that they can roll around and so on. But we have the quotes and the pricing for all of that, ready to roll.
To repair all of them?
Yes. What is that number? We're... Let me just, how about me just getting that information and emailing it to you and get close to the dollar line for you?
Okay. Sounds like you're on top of it though.
I'm saying more like something like $50,000, $60,000.
Jeff, when we get to those year-end budgets on the 29th amendments, can we maybe have that discussion before that and fix?
Mike, if you did, you wouldn't make any progress because that's gonna be on the 29th day of June. You're not gonna be able to spend any money before the 30th day of June. So you'd be spending...
Wait till the...
Wait until July 1st forward. If you are desperate to move forward, one of the budget amendments that we've taken down tonight relates to the CCHS, the purpose of the...
Football field.
Football field. Budget Amendment 6-3.
Uh-huh.
Look at Budget Amendment 6-3 exhibit C.
Yep.
Very bottom of that, you're gonna see $223,860. That is committed to capital projects and reserve. You see this budget amendment for the CCHS football resolution decreed, that's $75,000. Leaving the balance, $148,860.
Yeah, I'm not...
Are you seeing that?
Sorry.
Yeah.
6-3 is the budget resolution number.
But you said 200 something. You said 200 something thousand dollars.
Down the very bottom of exhibit C, the second page of the budget, 6-3.
Okay.
Down the very bottom, $223,860. That's the reserve amount for capital outlay.
I don't see that.
We don't have that.
I don't see that.
142, that you mentioned.
We don't have that.
142, less than 75.
I have no idea what you have.
We don't have the second for budgets.
I have, I said I had it, I had 200 on.
Mine is a different number. Let's just go with your number and say you're correct. 142.19. Still leaves $67,910 not presently appropriated with either interreserve or capital outlay.
But we can appropriate it for lab.
Absolutely.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion that we appropriate the remaining $67,000 for Campbell County High School if necessary. May not be enough to do the local high school lab.
Mike, I think it's that $67,000 is what he's speaking of on the labs and the money from Miss Monroe.
That's what I was thinking.
Is it all of it?
Some of it, yes.
That's what he's been working with Richard on, is the balance. That's my understanding.
Are you using all of it? He's using portions. He pulls things out of it.
I believe that's right, Mike.
I thought it is too. I believe that's what I was under the impression of.
So it'd be $18,000 less than that.
If I may, and I don't mean this in any negative way, here's where it calls purposes that the director schools ask plans and provisions under date actions. And I can't tell you what those plans presently considered utilized. And if I guide you to take this kind of action not knowing that, then you can't spend a dollar twice. That's awful. So I strongly recommend that. What you do here tonight is talk about what you'd like to do. The regular director schools to go and put together a funding plan for that out of your existing funds. See what you have, then come back at your June 29th meeting, see what you have left and then if that's not the right one, dedicate those funds even when you can't extend them. At least you could specify them for a specific project. You're all over the page here with the...
Well, my goal is to get the labs repaired and replaced. I mean, you need to go up there and look at it. If anybody would walk in those labs and look at them, you'd be embarrassed.
I think you're saying...
I understand.
Yeah, I think you're saying...
So everybody will know. We pull money out and we spend it on various things we all agree to. But we need to, sometimes we need to stop spending it in other places. They've been talking about it for six months now.
129, so?
I'd say let me get with my financial person tomorrow and make you guys, just email you a list of obligations we've talked about.
Should we not have a special meeting sometime next week?
Well, we've got that meeting on the 25th.
Well, I'm just saying we wanna go ahead and do. Yeah, we got a workshop Friday night.
And then we have to...
We can do anything we want.
I tried, I'm saying we can do it, yeah.
We can do anything we want.
Yeah.
Hold on.
We're gonna have some clarity of purpose.
Hold on, Walt.
We're gonna have some clarity of purpose and if you're gonna try and do something at your meeting that on the 25th, like the parents talking about there, then as opposed to it being a budget meeting, you need to just recess this meeting to the 25th and then recess that meeting to the 29th to get to there if you take action.
Okay.
You're not gonna be able to spend any money before June 30th regardless.
Okay.
So why not just get it all sorted out and then come back with final year-end amendments to, if necessary, to dedicate it for, by that time we'll be able to tell the board what we can do in the form of designated funding.
Sounds good to me.
We may have that 200,000 difference.
Yeah, we may very well. Well, at least 100,000.
Yeah, at least.
Whatever it is, I'll...
I do too, I agree with you.
Do we need a motion to do that?
It's passed on to get to the end.
Okay.
Push this board, Ken. All right, we're on. Thank you, Chad.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. You're a good man.
I do wish it was 200,000.
Yeah, I do too. And it may be.
Item for discussion. Mr. Niderfer touched on it, but we'll go over again. Discuss Jim Nace in Florida, Del Valle Elementary School. Have we received any funding agreed on Mr. Nolan Bear's? I'll call him tomorrow.
Now, I got a report from Richard that stated that it's gonna be approximately 70,000 to 78,000. And that was probably, we had...
Okay.
He had emailed me, I'm sorry.
Okay. We need to check.
But can I say something on that?
Yes.
Sorry. I, um, we are in desperate need for space at our school as well, as you are probably aware. And I just feel that we would give a better showing to the family worth that donated money by doing something academically with it instead of, you know, just sports and the gym floor. I would love to put a new lab in with their donation, just, again, just to show that we can do something academically and it plays a part for all students. So I just kinda wanted to throw that in there. So I don't know, of course, we still need something on the gym floor, so.
Have you had any meetings with that committee that you...
I've spoken with Crystal and Sarge several, yeah, we've discussed this.
We just need to bring back what you all want to do.
Yeah.
The board is open and the family needs to be aware of what they want to do with the remaining. Let us know.
Will do.
B, discuss if you're a lab at Carroll's plant, I think you put that on here.
I just wanted to discuss that further. Mr. Niderfer, I think we had talked about this and just wanted to bring it up. You know, it's been brought to my attention several times that Ms. Atkins at Carroll's is in need of another computer lab for next year's testing. She is concerned that she does not have enough, an adequate amount of computers to do the testing that's required next year on these students. And I guess the question I had was, do we have the money this year? Are we gonna have it this year? I guess, when do they, I keep asking, when are they gonna be able to get the labs?
I think that that would be a good question to ask Richard in regard to how much money we have left over in capital outlay this year. And I will get that to you guys tomorrow via email on each one of these issues. How much money will be on each one and then how much may be remaining. Jack is, Mr. Cannon, he's been doing red lights, yellow lights, green lights on their testing situation for next year. So, Mr. Cannon, I'll let you jump in because I think Carroll Elementary is part of one of those lights.
I went down yesterday, looked at program and once you decided we could put one in and it cost approximately $30,000. We have to have at least 30 more machines down there to meet testing requirements next year. We were aware of that and we also have LaFolde Elementary that is borderline over a number of machines. The state has a grid that we put in. We've updated all the internet for all the schools. We finished this thing by the end of the summer, so we have all the testing requirements there. We're gonna be needing some machines in for next year and I spoke to Mr. Niderfer about that. We've been getting that price together for that. The approximate cost of the lab down there for equipment, desk, switch is about $30,000. And we'd prefer to put a desktop lab in instead of a mobile lab because they take the machines out, you have more damage, you know, the children are smaller, they're costing more. So we'd prefer to put a desktop lab in. She does have a group for that, so we've been looking at that for her.
I was thinking, it would be really bad if we got faced with testing requirements and we couldn't test our kids because we don't have those computers.
Mr. Cannon, you mentioned Carroll, LaFolde Elementary. Was there one more school that was on the list?
Yeah, LaFolde, LaFolde Middle School as well. We are aware of this. We'll have those problems resolved before testing time comes. I mean, our biggest problem down there at Carroll's was they did not actually have a physical location for that. And we're trying to find out with Beth Atkins exactly if she wanna do a mobile lab or a desktop lab. And a desktop lab is about part of the best for her situation. And she just gave us that information. She told me which room they were gonna do and we looked at it yesterday, so we can get a layout of exactly what we need.
Well, Mr. Nider, if we have to wait on next year's budget, will we be able to get them by the time they're required for the testing is the question.
Oh, yes.
We don't have enough money this year, I understand.
Yes, we, Jack, Mr. Cannon has a quick turnaround through PSC.
We can have it done, we'll say the end of August, first, September. We'd have all that. The biggest problem will be getting desks in. We can get the equipment in. It just, you know, it takes six, eight weeks to get there, so that's only, that would be a whole lot of was actually getting the desk in for that location.
We don't have to take action in the board for that either, I don't believe, do we? I mean, is that a contract? Do we have to take them both? The computer lab, this lab and the investment?
You know, that's big business.
He doesn't have to go for it.
You got a microphone, I can't hear.
I'm sorry. I can't get closer. So is that right, Joe, is what you said?
No, no, I...
Okay. I have a question. Are there any grant money on that, Mr. Cannon?
No, sir.
No grant money for computers?
It used to be so.
Thank you, Mr. Nider.
You're welcome.
We took the money that they give us and we updated all the infrastructure. You got more internet capability as far as...
Well, I mean, I wasn't questioning you, I was just, see, I know you're doing a good job.
So thank you.
Thank you, Jen. We are, uh, we are working with Mr. Cannon and on the budget because we spend several thousands and thousands of dollars on technology and he does a great job in showing us what we need and how to get it. And we're working with Richard on the budget to make sure we have the things in place that we need and we'll roll that out next year and you guys will get to see that before long.
Okay.
Thank you, Jack.
All right, keep, just keep on going.
Next item, C, discuss CTE program position. I had that put on here. Mr. Niderfer and I think several of us have talked about that CTE position. Couple of years ago, when Ms. Sharon retired, that position got combined with the secondary education position, which I think was a mistake. And Larry knows where I stand on the position, just like you all know where I stand on it. But Mr. Niderfer's got some thoughts he wants to share with us on this coming year.
I think Mr. Heatherly back there is a high-energy person and I know he is. And career technical education blends tightly with secondary education. We have approximately 29 career technical education teachers at both high schools. Those focus areas, concentrators, that is all married, tied in to graduation rates and evaluation of those teachers will be, and Mr. Heatherly was a high school principal, middle school principal, therefore he has the background and expertise, I think, to take care of both jobs. Most counties, their career technical supervisor and their secondary supervisor are one and all and I think he can do a great job on that and we can evaluate that as the year goes along. And I've got the confidence that he'll take care of it.
And if he doesn't, then we can...
As in foot long, we will...
I don't have enough, not to know any confidence in him, but I figured that's your point.
We're not placing transportation, discipline hearings, bullying, harassment hearings, pokers and 504 plans and all those things that just take the life out of your day. He's gonna focus on career technical education and secondary education.
Sharon, do you have something?
I think he will do an excellent job and I hope I don't have to fire you again, Robbie. Surely we'll have to do it two more times, another time. Robbie was a CTE teacher also, so he has some, he has the background for it. I know it would be nice to leave it. I did it for 25 years, Ms. Eunice did it for several years, so, but this is Mr. Niderfer's decision, I guess, at this point, so.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, that is his recommendation.
Yeah. The most important thing that he did was take some of those positions off that secondary education person. All right, it's put it on for discussion. We'll move on. Anybody else got anything?
Well, just like Mr. Niderfer's approach to it, to try, it's different and if it works, it works and if it doesn't, we can look at it from another, you know, another angle.
Next item, discuss legal matters. Do you have anything? All right. Recognize school board members. Ms. Crystal?
I think so.
Don't have any? Mr. Clint?
Nope.
Well, as usual, I have things. Number one is a retreat. I want the board to be excited about it because it's gonna be an exciting time for our board. Tammy Grissom is going to come and lead the retreat and she is excellent. She's a lot of fun, she's very detailed and knowledgeable about this, all of the things that have to do with the board. Sharon and I both have wanted to set long-range and short-range plans and goals for this board. We've got new members on the board, we've got a new beginning and we wanted to just build on that and have the best possible board. There will be, there will be a break. It starts at 3 o'clock, there'll be a break. And Ms. Nikki, I think, is, she always just supplies all of the goodies for breaks and then we'll have dinner around 5:00. So I hope everybody will feel free to come to that. Now, the other thing is our Fall District meeting. Y'all got information of the date that it's gonna be. Campbell County is, the East District is gonna be going to Lenore City, so we'll hope to have 100% except for we know that Homer is very ill and possibly can't go. And last year, Mr. Niderfer rented Enterprise van and we all got to ride together. So that was a lot of fun and we hope he'll do that again. Hint, hint, Mr. Niderfer.
We need to have some goodies in it though, Ms. B.
And the next thing is I would like to get an update from Jack Cannon on the intercom system that we invested in earlier this year.
Yeah, they were waiting till school was out, so they'll be in the process of putting that in this summer, so it'll be ready when school starts.
And that's wonderful, okay. The other thing is in your packet, I had Gail to print off all of the laws that were passed that has to do with education in the General Assembly this spring. There was, there was so many hours went into this from TSBA and we had one conference call because our day on the Hill was canceled and we had a four-hour conference call because all of these bills, TSBA takes a stand or either they take no stand or they oppose it. But this is the final bills that were passed that has to do with education. The other thing is, over the weekend, I went to the Board of Directors' second quarter meeting in Nashville and that took place in the middle of their, all of their best of times reunion activities. But I left on Friday afternoon at 1:00 for a 4:30 meeting and a 7:45 meeting on Saturday. And the treat was, and I did not know till we got there, is Candace McQueen, our State Education Commissioner, was there and she was absolutely wonderful. One of the key things that she said, you know, before I told you there was a link that people could go on and make comments about Common Core, their likes, their dislikes, their input of what to do to make it better, what to live off. She says that all of those have been compiled and they have a team working on that right now and there were a lot of good, there were a lot of good things coming up from that. And the last thing is that I appreciate Mr. Niderfer's communication with the board. It's so important. I appreciate your emails and standing, keeping us up to date. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fay. Also, along the lines with Fay, Gail, this Bear Skin Lodge, that's coming up in July, is that right? Y'all got a envelope on the, is that the law, the summer law seminar? Is that what that is? In Gatlinburg, so there's some information about your trip up there coming up in July. Okay.
Mr. Berg?
Yes, I'd like to commend the committee that put together the best of times reunion this weekend. There's a lot of hard work went into it and they did a great job. I just wanted to recognize the fact that it brought a lot of people into the community, a lot of good times. That's all it has.
Do I have a question I can ask you? Do you have a technology plan with schools, is this incorrect, on computers?
Yeah, we did that with the state. The state has one online that we've actually filled out to get a basis on where our testing is and where we need to for our testing. We did that with Park last year to get our switching and what we had to do for our infrastructure and then we're taking that and moving that on to our, for equipment, stuff like that, in that direction. It's under A Tools. We've got a online ready to fill out and it gives us some information. They're compiling it by the 15th and then they're gonna let us know the new direction or anything else that might need to change. I know the principals are gonna decide whether to do K-2 online testing and that will affect them both as well.
Will you fill this?
Yes, we, last year, we put a new lab in at Jackspur Elementary School to get them into, or get them where they can do the testing. We also put one at Jelko Elementary. So both of those have two labs, their location alone has one. And I also spoke with Ms. Arnold yesterday morning. And we're gonna put a mobile lab in because they do not have a physical location for another one. And we're gonna put a mobile lab in there that they can move around to test in and that way the kids will get a chance to use the laptops to get familiar with them so they can do the testing because her children do not always have that opportunity at home to use a computer. So we're gonna get those in there when school first starts. I already got the lab ready to go for her, so it'll be ready to go when school starts and she can actually use that and she's got extra time to set aside for the children.
I'm jacked on top of it.
Mr. Dane?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Mr. Wall? Do you have anything?
Mr. Chairman, one other thing. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to have this copy of the bills that were passed concerning education, see me and I'll make sure that you get a packet of this. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to recess till the 25th at 6:00?
I'll make that motion. We'll move on.